All right, thanks for coming. First order of business, I'd like to examine the minutes of the October 7th meeting. Does anybody have any objections, corrections?
Just one item on the vote on the September board minutes. I abstained because I wasn't present at the September meeting.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Brubaker. Clearly, chair's error there. Any other comments, corrections? All right, I'd like to make the motion to approve with Commissioner Brubaker's correction, the meeting minutes of October 7th. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Vines, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
I wasn't here last week.
Sounds good. So unanimous with not abstaining. All right. Before we get started, I'd like to open up the floor. If there's anybody that wants to make any public comment related to any item that's not on the agenda this evening, and you're more than welcome to come up, state your name, your address, and if you have anything, we would respectfully ask for a five-minute limit. Seeing none of that, before we get to the meat and potatoes of tonight's agenda, I'd like to say a few words. Obviously, this is the eve of an important election, but in additional to voting, which I hope all of you who are eligible will do, there's another way you can contribute, and you can contribute to the democracy by serving on the Radnor Planning Commission. So, this is my public service announcement as this year draws to close. We have at least one member of the commission who will be rolling off after two terms of service, and of course, that'll create an opening on our board. And I know I've said this before, I'm gonna say it again, if you want to be at the forefront of any development in Radnor, this is the place you want to be. There's no better place than sitting in this dais. And over the past year, what we've been able to accomplish here is we've heard from Villanova, we've listened to Eastern University, the Jewish Federation, but also, we've had our hand on the Radnor Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which is a once-in-a-decade exercise. Of course, ours is once-in-every-two-decades exercise, and this document will serve as a guideline for our plan to develop Radnor, as well as some ordinances, hopefully for just the next 10 years. Unlike what you would see on the ballot, being a member of the commission is not an elected position here. You do have to apply, however. So if you're interested, and the work of the Radnor Planning Commission is exciting for you, as it is for all of us, please reach out to Peggy Hagan, Bill White's office, with your indication of interest, as well as your CV, and she'll shepherd you through the application process. And we'll have an upcoming opening for which he can apply. Also, speaking about our Comprehensive Land Use Plan, there's a meeting here. It's a regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. It's gonna be here on November 11th. At 6:30, our consultants will also be presenting the comp plan, or where we are in the comp plan, in front of our Board of Commissioners. Of course, the public is more than welcome to come, listen to this update live, or you can watch from home, either on YouTube, or I guess Channel 21, if you subscribe to cable. As always, as far as the comp plan is concerned, to get updates, go to radnor2035.com, and hopefully you'll give up your email address, so you can get updates delivered to you, or you can just take a look at them live on the website. Let's move on to the agenda. So the first item, I'm gonna go a little bit out of turn, Application 212752, Land Development. This is Eastern University, 1300 Eagle Road. I'm told that the applicant requested to table at this time, and if you're a member of the public, and you're here for that particular item, just watch the Radnor Township website, see if this applicant will be appearing at our next meeting, or perhaps a subsequent one. Our next meeting of the Planning Commission is currently scheduled for December 2nd. So if you're here for that, stay tuned, more to come. Next item, Application 213066, 245 South Bryn Mawr Ave. This is a land development application. So this application is considered to be a minor subdivision, so they're looking for a recommendation for both preliminary and final land development approval. Can you come up? And good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Chuck Dobson with Inland Design. I am the engineer for the applicant, and we are here tonight, this is the first time that the commission has seen this project, but I do note that we have, since we made submission, we received comments from your township engineer, your township traffic engineer, and as recently as this afternoon at 4:00, we got comments from Gannett Fleming relative to the planning model submission we made as well. So we're well on our way to already addressing the comments, but having said that, wanted to come before you folks, have a little conversation about what we're doing, get some feedback, and hopefully, based on comments I get here tonight, we'll include those with the consultant's reviews, and make one more revision, get it back into you folks, so that we can hopefully make this as quick and painless as possible.
Mr. Dobson, would it be fair, and it's entirely up to you, for us to ask you a few questions about your submission today, and maybe that'll kind of decide the direction that we want to take this in?
That's fair by me.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so you're asking for two waivers. Obviously, waiver number one is for private driveway on arterial or major collector street, and another waiver that the common driveway shall provide access to for single-family dwellings, which is what you're presenting here. So a couple of things, on the Fleming letter of October 28th.
Yes, sir.
Page 2, with respect to zoning, they asked to dimension the parking spaces, garages, and garage access. Walk us through that requirement, how you comply?
Well, I'm not gonna sit here, I'm not gonna stand here, I'm not sitting, I'm standing. But so, we recognize that we have a few comments to address, certainly.
Okay.
So I would say that, right now, the parking spaces, as shown on the plan, are identified as nine and a half feet wide and 20 feet long, which I believe meets your ordinance requirement. We have other parking spaces outside each individual unit, which are slightly wider, 12-foot wide, and also 20 feet long. So what the idea was, that each of the units has one parking space interior, they will have one parking space exterior to the garage, and then we have the two overflow parking spaces that are shown down on the southern end of the site. So recognizing that Mr. Phillips has made some comments about that, then we need to go in and maybe modify some of the dimensions, just so that we can demonstrate full compliance with that.
So what do you think you want to do? Do you want to maybe table the submission for now?
Well, I don't, I'm not here tonight to look, I'm not looking for a recommendation for you folks. What I thought would be productive tonight is just get your feedback, have some questions that you might have answered, any suggestions that you all want to make about things that we like to see, maybe things you don't want to see, we'd make those revisions. So the next time we appear in front of you, it's kind of, okay, we've already had the discussion, then we can really just kind of focus on things that we really need to discuss relative to planning issues on the project. So that was my suggestion.
Okay, sounds good. With that being said, commissioners, what questions do you have about the submission as it stands? Okay. Go ahead.
Why do you have two water retention systems?
Well, we've got two water retention systems, and really, there are two systems, but they act as one. So really, the topography on the site is that we kind of have a high point in the middle. So you've got water that drains off the back, and then water that drains towards Bryn Mawr Avenue. So what we wanted to do is to meet some of the water quality requirements in your ordinance, is anything that drains off the back would go into a rain garden, and any of the overflow from the rain garden would be moved up towards the front of the site, where we have really good percolation. So the idea is that we have two systems that kind of capture the runoff from the site in both of, kind of, I call them the subwatersheds, and then from the rain garden, any of those, any of that water, because it really doesn't infiltrate too well in a rain garden, it's more of a water quality measure, then we'll get all of our infiltration in the system up towards Bryn Mawr Avenue.
And not to belabor the point, since we're doing this more like a sketch plan approach, I live in a townhouse community, and you need more and bigger guest spots.
Well, I, I'm not gonna disagree with you, been doing this a long time.
The mailman's gonna make a delivery, and the UPS guy's gonna be there, and neither one will fit in those two spots, and they'll block access to the townhouses, and they can't easily park in the street, because it's lots of activity and lots of traffic that particular road.
No, excess parking spaces in a townhouse community is always a comment. I mean, I do know that we meet the code specifically. With respect to Amazon deliveries, UPS deliveries, mail deliveries, my experience is that those people don't actually use parking spaces at all. They zip out, they make their delivery, and they're back in their truck, and they leave it idling the entire time. So that's been my experience, and doing this about 30 years, and obviously, Amazon has been somewhat prevalent the last 10, 15, but that's been my experience.
Other things like landscape people, you know, block access to, unless they park on the street. In other words, it just, there's a lot going on in the lot, it's a small lot, and it's a busy road out front. That's my first blush impression, that I wish it was three instead of four, maybe that's why the code talks about a driveway for three properties instead of four.
No, understood. I think that relative to the driveway, I think we're somewhat limited by the fact that we are on Bryn Mawr Avenue, and having multiple access points along this limited amount of frontage would be something that Pendout would object to. We do meet the area per unit, and I think what's important to recognize is that this planned submission, as shown, complies. You have a maximum impervious coverage limit of 36% in this district. Currently...
The max, the existing impervious cover on this particular property...
You were like at 35.8, right? Something like that?
I'm sorry?
You were at 35.8?
Yeah, 35.8. So right currently, the existing impervious on the property is 51%. So it's far over what would normally be permitted by zoning. I would think that, you know, if the applicant knew that he could simply maintain the 51%, we could probably address the overflow spaces pretty easily, but I don't want to make that assumption that, hey, we can count on some sort of just zoning determination, that, hey, it's already 51%, even though we're knocking it down to just under 36%, doesn't necessarily mean we're entitled to some sort of zoning relief when it comes to impervious cover. So, you know, it's always a balancing act when you want to, you know, it's, you know, it's a project that my client has to make work, it's gotta be feasible from top to bottom, and, you know, we look at the code provisions, and we follow the code provisions the best we can, and then we make the submission, and, you know, we kind of go through some of the nuts and bolts of the technical review, and then obviously, Mr. Kunda, your comments relative to additional spaces is well taken, certainly well noted.
And dimension, too.
I'm sorry?
And the dimension, as well, as those spaces. Our mail, our mail truck delivery, the guy parks in the guest space for half an hour, and that was the neighborhood, as well as our box.
Right. Well, I would hope that four units doesn't take a mail guy half hour to deliver mail to, especially when it's gonna be a community box, so then he's not gonna go to each one. Just prior to standing up here in front of you folks, my client and I were thinking about different ways that maybe we could modify the location of the mailbox drop-off. I mean, if it's four units, I gotta believe for United States postal delivery, that's probably gonna take somewhere around three or four minutes total to simply unlock boxes, fill it up, and then be on his way. So I don't think that presents an impediment to the circulation on the site, but, you know, it's something that we'll certainly take another look at, and we'll do the best we can.
Have you looked at, in light of the review letters, have you looked at your impervious coverage pro forma when it comes to adding perhaps some sidewalk access within this development? Does that increase your impervious?
It would increase the impervious. Now, I will say that, I think we have a little bit of latitude to work on, so my staff has designed this to have, they're basically the impervious coverage off the net lot area, and I do note that, and Steve, if I'm misspeaking here, or Roger, please correct me, but the way Radnor does their impervious is the applicant gets the benefit of using the entire lot area, and that means the lot area out to the center of the roadway as the kind of the benchmark to start calculating all of the impervious that's actually outside the legal right-of-way of the roadway. So I think we probably have a little bit more room to work with as far as impervious. Your sidewalk comment's a good comment, I think it's something that we would like to see, we would try to add if we could, knowing that there's sidewalk along Bryn Mawr Avenue, it makes perfect sense, and that way, you can keep pedestrians and vehicles off the same, off the same path, basically.
Yeah, certainly, on a busy street like that, with existing sidewalk access, we would, we would be looking for that.
Fair enough.
Talk to us about that median in the driveway.
Well, the median on the driveway, as of six minutes ago, Mike? Is going to go. It's not gonna be there. I think somebody thought it was a good idea, it was...
Esthetics?
More or less. Probably, perhaps, a little overthought. I think the township engineer, the township traffic engineer actually asked questions about it, and when I looked at it, I was like, yeah, you're right, there's really no useful purpose for the median. Perhaps if they felt that they were really up against the impervious coverage limit, that that was, that little vegetated area in the center was a good way to kind of, you know, save impervious, but I don't think that's gonna be necessary, and I think we're gonna eliminate it.
Okay. With respect to perpetual easement to cut down vegetation, I think we're talking about the Radwin Apartments, right? From memory?
Correct.
Yeah, there was a comment regarding sightlines?
Mm-hmm.
And that vegetation in adjoining parcel would actually impact that?
It was mentioned in Gilmore's letter, I agree. I haven't taken a close look at that. So the way I look at that is, if the vegetation is within the legal right-of-way of Bryn Mawr Avenue, we probably can clear it. However, it's on private property, then we're gonna have to probably talk to those owners and see what we can do about getting that accomplished. Having said that, I do know that the driveway location that we're proposing is pretty much in the same location as what exists there today. So, you know, I'm assuming that the people who have been using this property every day with a variety of parking spaces, and I'm gonna say that the daily traffic going to the facilities is today is probably higher than what four residences are gonna give, because that's happening throughout the day, where the residents are gonna be peak morning and peak evening. But it's a good point, we're gonna have to take a look at that, and verify if there is in fact the need to clear out some of the vegetation to maintain the sightlines.
So one final question, if I may?
Yes.
And I think, you know, there's enough comments here, I think you concur, that probably, if you come back to us, even if it is a sketch plan again, we might have to take another look. Certainly, it doesn't have to be a submission, but it can be. What's the existing use of...
Medical office space.
Mike Zapatelli's the owner, Mike, come on up, please.
It's currently a medical office space, two medical uses, and an apartment above.
Okay, got it. Okay. Sounds good.
Could you go back to the first page of your drawings? Or actually, I'm sorry, the second page, where you actually chose the...
This one here?
Yep. So how does it work, say, with, I'm assuming it's gonna be Radnor trash, it's gonna be taking, hauling the trash away? So how does that work?
So spoke to Mr. Zapatelli about that before the meeting as well, I noted that that was in the consultant's comments letter, comment letters. So the way we looked at it would be that if we are running up against the impervious limit, and we choose to try to not go through a zoning variance for an exceedance of that limit, then Mr. Zapatelli feels that, who is it, J.K. and J. and K. disposals there now?
It's currently J. and K. now.
So what we would do, there's gonna be an HOA here, it's gotta be there basically for the common plowing, stormwater management, maintenance, and operation, so they would probably just, as part of the HOA, it would be privately contracted, so that people could have cans out on the driveway, much like you'd see in a lot of residential areas, and then whether it be once a week or twice a week, that'd be something that the HOA would contract with that hauler, and that's how it would get done.
But they, is there enough of a turning radius for a truck to get in there, and because as I said, it's Bryn Mawr Avenue.
Yeah, I believe there is. I think we did...
Yeah, so we have, we have two delivery truck turning templates, and that's a 23-foot long.
Typically, when you contract privately with a hauler for a small job like this, you're not looking at a full-size trash truck, you're actually looking at a reduced-size trash truck, because it's only four units. So I think that we could certainly be, we can make accommodations privately through the HOA to make sure that any vehicle that needs to access this is going to be able to, you know, adequately circulate around it, and do what they need to do for, as relative to trash pickup. I also note that we, to date, I don't believe we have any, any comments from your fire marshal, I gotta believe that there's gonna be comments coming back that, relative to emergency services as well. So we'll certainly get their feedback, make whatever adjustments we have to in the plan, and, you know, my goal is to get your comments, look at the consultant's comments, interface with some of the other folks that do reviews on the township, and when I come back to you, it's, oops, excuse me, there's really not a whole lot left to discuss, because we've already kind of taken care of it.
Sure. And we were probably not the best prepared to undertake a sketch plan review, but thank you for that opportunity. We do like applicants to come in and get a temperature check of the commission before they do a final submission. I'm gonna ask an obvious question. If you compact the site to maybe three instead of four, and I get that there's a compelling reason not to do that, don't a lot of these problems go away?
Well, I don't know that they're problems yet. I think what we need to do is, we need to take a second look at the plan set, based on the comments we've gotten, and if we can make it work in a way that complies with the ordinance, then I think the problem's been addressed that way. You know, taking a 25% hit on this job as it is now would, I don't know if Mr. Zapatelli would be able to move forward with the project at all, because, you know, projects have to comply, but they also, they're projects, they have to stand on their own, and if an applicant can't make a project work feasibly, then the applicant's got some difficult questions to ask themselves. So we felt that this was a reasonable use for this property, certainly the surrounding land uses seem to indicate that it would fit well within it, but, you know, that's why we make the submission, and we have these conversations.
Mr. Zapatelli, if you don't mind, I know the Radwin Apartments quite well, but what's to, what's on the other side of this property? Is it also commercial, small commercial, or is it residential? What is it?
I believe it's residential.
Okay, got it. Okay.
So just going off of what you were just discussing with the chair, I mean, it doesn't accord with the code, because the code only allows for three units, does it not?
Well, the code allows for, as far as the yield, the zoning yield, if we can get four units and comply with the code. The code has to do with the number of units on a single common driveway.
Right.
And this is, this is a bit of a hybrid, because if you're talking about a 12- or 14-foot-wide driveway, that would be similar to what you'd get in a single-family dwelling, and you're gonna try to take three or four units off of that, that presents a different issue relative to this. It's a 20-foot wide, 25-foot-wide driveway, two ways, so there really, you don't have any of the inherent conflicts that you would get with, you know, a much narrower driveway trying to serve multiple units. So that would be what I, so it's, it's a little different than just basically taking a 12-foot-wide driveway and trying to get three units off of it.
Right. So the code doesn't allow for that? It allows for three, not four, right? But in addition to that, it's a busy road.
Mm-hmm.
You need turnaround for emergency vehicles, that hasn't been addressed yet. And then you've got impervious coverage, which is an issue. So I mean, these aren't minor points, they're all significant points. So I guess I would say, those really need to be considered before you come back.
Yeah, fair enough, I completely understand that. So, I mean, I expect that part of our exercise after leaving this meeting is, we're going to engage with staff, township staff, township consultants, and we're gonna work through these, work through these items, and to the extent that they feel, hey, you've reached a point that you can't get past, then we've got a difficult discussion to have on our side of the table relative to moving forward with the project.
I have a question. I'm assuming these townhouses are gonna be marketed to young families with school-aged children. Is that accurate?
Mike?
Yes and no, and/or professionals from Bryn Mawr Hospital.
How many bedrooms are in each of these townhouses?
Four.
So it's likely that there will be kids here, I mean, what kind of measures are gonna be put into place so that the kids are protected from Bryn Mawr Avenue, if they're looking to play, or, I don't know, just...
On the assumption that you're gonna have young children here, other than putting a physical barrier between the units and Bryn Mawr Avenue, I don't think there is a way that you can forcibly stop a child from getting access to it. I think, you know, a lot of that's gonna depend on, A, who ultimately buys these units? Is it gonna be, you know, a family with a lot of young children? And when I talk about young children, I'm figuring 10-years-old and younger, typically teenagers, well, they're gonna go do what they're gonna do anyway. But, you know, we can certainly look at that relative to the buffering scheme that you have, as far as your requirements, and see if we can't do something to prevent that in the event that that should be something we need to address, but, yeah, I don't know that there's a way to forcibly prevent anybody from gaining access to it, other than fencing the whole thing off and having a lock gate.
Yeah, I'm not asking for a fence, I'm just, you know, there are designs, sort of consideration that can be taken to make sure that this is a family-friendly, safe environment, because I just know Bryn Mawr Avenue is not a pedestrian, is not a walkable street, it's not like, you know, you could take a stroller down that street.
Yeah, certainly not there, when you get further up towards the hospital. But is there anything in the code that requires a developer to build, like a buffer or something like that, to prevent...
You have screening buffers in your code for adjoining properties and also streetscape, but there is nothing in the code that I know that...
Okay.
...requires the erection of a fence or similar barrier that would prevent young children from getting access to Bryn Mawr Avenue.
So I would hate for y'all to leave here without some indication of temperature check for your development, and this is just my opinion. We, I feel that you've done a masterful job reducing the impervious to what it needs to be by code. We definitely want to commend the intent there. I'm certainly favorable towards turning this lot into more residential use, there's probably going to be less traffic associated with that, and we need to be mindful of where this particular development lies. It's a very busy street, we certainly like when traffic is reduced, even though, you know, we're only talking about four units. I feel that this lot probably calls for maybe three. That's sort of where my sense is, and we'd be looking to see, you know, the next round of this, to see how you, you're able to navigate four units on this lot. But, you know, certainly, three feels like the right number with what you're dealing with there. There's, there are a lot of things that have yet to be mapped out and dimensioned, so that's where I'll leave you.
All right, appreciate the comments.
Commissioners, any other comments, thoughts?
What's the measurement as you, for the width of the entrance, ingress, egress onto Bryn Mawr Avenue?
25 feet.
25 feet, okay. That's the only thing I have to see, it could be like a true bottleneck.
Solicitor, just a quick question. We should vote to table? Is that our duty here?
You can. There's no legal requirement that you vote to table, but I think that's what you guys have normally done, so...
Sure. Okay. All right. In that case, in the matter of Application 213066, 245 South Bryn Mawr Avenue, Land Development, I'd like to make a motion to table.
Second.
Second by Kunda, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, thank you so much for coming.
Appreciate your time tonight, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Okay, next up, Radnor Township School District, Eithen Elementary School. So this is a matter, I know you can do it much better than I can, Mr....
I don't know about that, MJ, so...
Mr. Falcone, but, so this is a matter that's coming up for zoning hearing board appeal, I guess November 21st is when you're, you're coming. The applicant is looking for a recommendation in two variances, so Section 280-112D uses on steep slope areas, and Section 280-112E, removing vegetation from steep slopes. When they come up for zoning hearing board, and I don't want to step on your toes, but zoning hearing board's gonna be looking for five things, there's five criteria that's examined by them, I'm not gonna list them here. That's not a burden this evening, anyway. It's not the dress rehearsal for the main event, the main event is ZHB. The main event is ZHB. So our decision tonight is an opinion, it's not binding on ZHB, it's not binding on anybody else. And with that, Mr. Falcone, please take it away.
Thank you very much. You've done a great job of explaining the relief that we are seeking from the zoning hearing board. What I'm gonna do is simply offer just a little bit of background on what got us to this point and why we're seeking this relief. And then I'm gonna turn it over to our engineer, and he'll talk about some of the specifics around the engineering and what's going on there. But I'm kind of uniquely positioned to offer some background on this. I was, at one point, on the school board in another life. And then also, I served on the subcommittee that helped to, I think, shape why this building is here and how we got there. So we're all aware that there is some need, or maybe we aren't all aware, but there is some need to address some aging infrastructure at Ithion Elementary School. There's also some overcrowding issues at some of the schools that have caused us to use, at times, some classrooms outside of the primary building. So when evaluating the need to either refurbish the existing Ithion building or create a new structure, the board and ultimately a subset of the community met and evaluated lots of different options around what to do with Ithion. Ithion is a, my kids go to Ithion, went to Ithion, it's a, it's a unique educational building. It's older, it has kind of, it's a square essentially with an open courtyard in the middle, and it creates a very unique educational environment. The, the building itself and a lot of the mechanicals of that building are aged, however, and in order to get them up to where they would need to be, it would require an extensive amount of work to the building. And when the district evaluated what it needed from a servicing perspective to meet the needs of the students and the entire community, as well as what was kind of feasible for the development of the building, it ultimately decided that a new building was what was best for the community. They then took that discussion a step farther, and they said, okay, well, do we want to build the new building on existing Ithion, which would require the students to be displaced during that construction process, and kind of what that would mean to those students? That committee that I helped serve on evaluated that option very closely, there were members of the board that felt strongly about doing that, knocking down the existing Ithion building, building the new building exactly where it is, and moving those students off-site. Ultimately, the board found that what was probably in the best interest of the students was to not displace them into maybe an office complex or something like that for an extended period, but to find a way to build a new building onsite, Ithion is a large property, and then allow those students to stay in existing Ithion. And then once the new building came online, they could move those students over safely and appropriately, and then they would demolish existing Ithion. So through that process, and I think many months and months and months of discussion, the board ultimately voted to do just that, to build a new building onsite, allow the students to stay in the existing educational building, and then once that was complete, to move them over. In order to do that, then, you had to evaluate the site itself and the natural conditions. While Ithion is a huge piece of property, it is met with lots of natural features that make it difficult to place a new, large school onsite. Specifically, when you look at the Radnor Township Code, we all know that man-made slopes don't get any exemption here unless those slopes themselves are a part of a plan that predated this construction project. We actually have found a plan for the construction of the existing Ithion building, which kind of was just brought to my attention on Friday. We're gonna bring it to staff and discuss it with them, but we think maybe there's a large portion of these slopes that we can identify as actually man-made and part of a approved plan, which would help us then reduce the amount of relief we're seeking. Notwithstanding that finding, the building that was proposed here was located in such a way as to essentially create, thank you, is to create a, a new... Your new building is here in the brown. A new educational environment that met with a lot of the kind of educational goals the school, the school wanted to meet with design and use. Kind of ultimately, these courtyard areas were important to allow for some interior, interior and exterior access for students that can come out. You know, if you've been to Ithion now, they have that kindergarten wing, they can get outside. It, it just worked with the overall planning. It allowed for us to utilize some of the existing driveways and drive access points to continue to come in and come up the hill without disturbing additional slopes down in that area. That was important. As you moved further away from the school, for any of those that are familiar with the, with the site, it goes steeply down, and there are also some wetlands down there and some woods. So we met with other natural features that made it difficult for us to find a perfect location. So from the, the board's perspective, when they looked at the site, they felt stacking the building kind of almost like it's hugging the existing building around the back of Ithion, that allowed for as limited amount of disturbance as they could do while also providing the, the right use of existing driveways, drive aisles, which would then ultimately create the least amount of disturbance. So that's how we got here. I'm gonna turn it over to our engineer now to identify some of these slopes, show you where those identified areas are, and how we're disturbing them with this building. Once we're done with that discussion, I can come up and answer some more discussion about how we got here, if there's any of that.
Mr. Falcone, before you go...
Yeah.
Who, who was, give us some names here of who wanted to displace these students.
I can't, I can't do that. So, you know, there was certainly robust discussion around what was ultimately best, I think, for the overall development. And there are, you know, there were very good arguments as to why we should be placing it on its existing location. A lot of those had to do with kind of the relief we're seeking tonight. If we were able to place the new building where the old building is, we would've disturbed less slopes and needed less relief. And so there, you know, there are folks that were mindful of that.
Before you get into the displace slopes, with this drawing itself, can you, I think for the folks at home, as well as even for me, just to kind of lay out the new bill, new proposed building versus the existing building?
So I can show you, the, the new building is in kind of just like a brown or kind of a deep red here.
Yep.
Is there an overlay that we have at all, do you know?
No, but I'm trying to think.
Why don't you kind of step up here?
Hi. Yes, so this is the existing building, and basically, you're gonna have to, you know, we don't have an overlay for it, but paying heed to the different slope designations, the darker one are slopes over 20%, the lighter gray ones are 14 to 20%. So this, this area in particular here, you can see it's this area in here where the, where the existing building is, is lying right now. And the proposed parking area that's here, that is, that is here is gonna be replacing the way it's being phased, and there's, there's lengthy discussion on this, there's a lot of coordination going on currently right now. And actually, one of the, one of our big discussions tomorrow is the phasing in our weekly meeting, is this school will be built, the existing parking area will stay in place as long as possible, and when it gets to a point to transition to use of the new building, the existing building in this area here will be removed, and the new paving will, will go, will go in. So trying to, this area, this building will stay as long, the existing building will stay online as long as, long as possible.
And what happens to the existing building once it's demolished?
It's gonna be disposed of in a safe and legal manner. There are some, there's some, is there a particular, like, things in the building you're talking...
No, 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 I'm talking about basically, it's gonna just be grass, is it gonna be, you know...
Oh, it'll, it'll transition right over to the, what you see here is the paving in the parking lot. It'll, it'll transition, the, the building will come down, and then as it's coming down, it's gonna be on the same, pretty much the same time converted to parking area. Our stormwater facilities, at one time, we had a stormwater facility located under here, but because of the timing and the phasing, we've located them. This one you see out front here is the surface facility that's located out front. Right now, the, what they call the annex is down here, and the kindergarten playgrounds currently are. And in the back here, these are two, the, the board is adamant about having underground stormwater facilities for, for purposes, particularly in this area, with the children also from an aesthetics standpoint. So what you see here, this is, this will be an athletic field that can, also will have an underground facility underneath. This is a new consolidated playground area that also itself will have a large underground facility underneath as well. And with David talked about the courts, they all open up, up, and we, we presented it last month, you remember the, the whole, that was one of the reasons we wanted to present it, about how tying the woods into this area. So that's the reason for that. You can see, we're trying to accommodate, minimize the, the limit of disturbance to minimize what woods we need to take. So you can see, even though we do have these large areas to, for the stormwater attenuation, we get these three-to-one slopes to get everything back, back down to existing grade as quickly as possible.
How many cubic feet are being disturbed, per your current plan?
Oh...
And are you asking for a specific number, a range, or what are you seeking exactly? Because I understand that some of this isn't final, final.
Right. So what we had intended to do for the zoning hearing board is create a plan with just colored locations. And again, I think some of that is gonna get fleshed out even further. This is the plan I was speaking of, that we were able to locate, which was for the, they called it at that point, the Radnor Elementary School. And this was when that was, I think, constructed. So we're gonna bring this to the township, talk about it with them, but it, it shows some of the initial construction of the school and where the slopes were, and the tennis courts and everything around that, to hopefully identify some of these areas, MJ, as, as being part of this plan and created that way. But irrespective of it, we are still going to be, going to the zoning hearing board, asking to disturb the very slopes that we're showing tonight. I, I think just to, to kind of add some clarity to it, there'll be, I guess, colored areas showing the different levels of disturbance, where we're removing vegetation, where we're actually digging and filling. So I think that'll still come out a little bit more, and I think it'll even still be fleshed out even further as part of the land development process, which we'll then ultimately come back to you all for. Identifying the areas of disturbance at this point allows us to take the next step into the land development area. So we have to get through the zoning hearing board before we move through any of the full land develop, land development, where I think we'll get into more of the actual areas, what the cut and fill is going to be, what the cubic yards are gonna be for removal and things like that.
So, Mr. Falcone, just to re-ask the same question...
Yeah.
And I'm really trying to understand, you're not going into ZHB with a particular number?
We are not going to ZHB with a particular number, we're going in with areas that we think we're going to disturb.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
MJ, what is being asked of us here today? Are we just providing an opinion or just giving comments?
We are asking for a recommendation to the zoning hearing board of the planning commission's thoughts on just the, the aspect of disturbance of the slopes, whether the planning commission recommends the zoning hearing board entertain our variance requests to disturb the areas of...
The steep slope disturbance, that's it?
That's it, for tonight. We'll be back with much more when we're actually into the land development process, but right now, that's what we're here for.
Just to clarify, they're asking not just that they entertain, but that they approve? That's, that's the recommendation?
Related to that, though, I'd like to ask a question. Has the township ever done this before? Meaning, built a school on the property of an existing school while the school is still functioning?
I, I don't believe so.
Because it is a project unto itself.
Absolutely.
You can imagine the logistical things that have to happen with security and safety and staging and cut and fill, and it's not an easy thing.
It is not. So everything you're saying is actually, I think, why this board has done a really good job, the zoning, the school board, of evaluating all of that, and that's why the process took so, so long, and there was so much discussion around, hey, should we be building it here, should we be moving the kids off? It was really thoughtful and caring discussion about this, and they ultimately landed on here, but it was not, very much to your point, not an easy decision for them, because they were weighing all of the different aspects of this development. And I give them a lot of credit for, for doing it so thoughtfully.
But it's, it's been done at, what's the school, right on Goshen Road in 252, was it Culver, Newtown School, in...
Yep, they just did it.
Yeah, they just finished.
On Goshen Road, it's in Newtown School District. They, they built essentially a whole new part of that school while they were still in school and brought it online.
Sports field, yeah.
Yeah.
A new wing or a whole new school?
A new wing, but it's, it's basic, it's attached, and it's basically half the size of the school.
I think it maybe doubled the size of the school.
They've done it at Devon Elementary, too. If memory serves.
There's definitely, so Tridifern East Town School District, who I also represent, they, they do a lot of construction. They just did a massive expansion at the high school, they created a whole new atrium wing there, and all of the issues you're talking about are things that, that matter, keeping kids engaged during construction, safe during construction, all of that.
Actually, Radnor did it, if you think about it, they did it with the middle school, right?
They, they built a new middle school, yeah.
And, and I think we'll get a chance to entertain the nuts and bolts of that, if they get to the land development phase. I think what Mr. Falcone's in front of us today on is just specific to, can we do this? Because if, if our recommendation is known, zoning hearing board agrees, then we're not going to that next phase. So we'll see them several times during the land development process if they get there.
Absolutely. Correct. This is a threshold issue for us, to move forward with this project.
On, on another note, David, you saw, I saw that you had the plans from back in like 1962, or when, because I think the school's built 63, I believe. The tennis court was built, if my memory serves me correctly, because I'm, I'm an alum of the Ithion Elementary School.
Yeah.
But that was done subsequent to the 70s, I believe.
Yes, so that's not on this plan.
Yeah, so there has to be some additional plans for that, because there, if my memory, again, my memory serves me correctly, they flattened that out.
They did, of course, and you'll see there, there's no tennis court shown on this plan.
Yeah, the, the tennis court's here, and then you, I think this was a library expansion, or over here, the annex, the classrooms are actually, I think this actual area here, which is, was labeled as...
Yeah, the whole, the whole back, if I remember right, the whole back where, where you're talking about building the building, there was some work done there, if I remember right, after the original building was built, I think it maybe like in the 70s, I think maybe probably in the late 70s, I think.
Yep, but if you simply stand at the school today and look out, you, I mean, you realize that there's been a, a plateau created there.
So if your overarching interest is to operate the school while the other school, Ithion 200 is being built, are you saying that with the plan that you're, that is in front of us today, you will not be going dark at all?
That's correct. So those students will stay in school until the new building is online.
Okay.
Correct.
And this is the only way to do it, is to disturb the steep slopes?
You beat me right to it. Yep, this is the only way to make that process happen. This is the only location where it works, this is the only way to keep redevelopment onsite at Ithion with the students in their current building. It's this plan.
So commissioners...
Just on that, and I know it's not our, our issue, but maybe to help put it in perspective, like, what's the timeframe of the construction project, and like, how long would the kids be in the alternate, you know, situation if, if that were, you know, if we were to tear down and rebuild versus what, what's going on here?
So I, if I'm remembering correctly, and I'm sure somebody here can, can fix it, but I think the idea is my, my youngest is in first grade, and I think they thought maybe, I'm sorry, it's in second grade, it went by...
Can I remind you that this is being recorded and probably watched?
So by the time he is in fifth grade, I think the hope is he may have an opportunity to be in the new building. I think that is the ideal, like, if everything went perfectly, I believe that's the timeline. I know that's not a great way to explain it, but in my brain, that's, that's how I'm mapping it out. So, maybe, what's that, about three years, something like that?
Yeah, talking to the, we're looking at the schedule, I think it's move-in date would be March 20, 2027, is, is the target right now, so...
All right, well, when we ascertain how old your child is, maybe we'll rule on this. So in summary, commissioners, this is really what they will be presenting in front of ZHB, and I think their burden is that there's no other way that this plan could be done, so...
The only thing I would suggest is that, and I was just thinking about it, it's like, what are the ramifications with what you're doing from the neighboring community so, and I can't remember the name of the community, but...
Ithion Woods, I think. It's not Ithion Woods, it sits right?
Ithion Woods, no, not Ithion Woods, on the backside of it.
Oh, right.
On Brinmore Avenue.
Okay.
So if you're making a left on Brinmore Avenue towards, going towards the hospital...
Across from Cornerstone.
Across from Cornerstone.
Yeah.
There are the ones who are gonna have the ramifications of whatever, from either water or erosion or...
Sure.
Whatever, whatever is in the, so has anyone approached... So has anyone approached them or that HOA, remembers the HOA there or?
Yeah, so the district has, and again, there was, they had set up a, kind of a stakeholder subgroup that met for kind of months and months and months and months, maybe even more than a year. Representatives from that community, representatives down from Ithyn Woods, representative, teacher representatives, Ithyn parent representatives, there were representatives from the district staff. So a, a very, and I, it was 20 or 30 people that would meet regularly to discuss this development and the impact on the different communities and the different stakeholders. So they have done a good job. They've also held several open houses to welcome people in to talk about this project. And the board held some town halls around this and asked folks to come in. So there's been a pretty significant outreach to get out. We'll continue to do that. I think that's very good advice, especially as we move through the land development process and the actual impact becomes real. I think that's very good advice.
I would think they're going to be the ones that are probably more impacted than, than say like Ithyn Mill.
I, I think, I think that's probably right. Yeah. So I think it's very good advice and we'll, we'll continue to do it.
So we did have some resident interest last meeting. I, I know that we kept it super high level last time. We did have three residents stop by. Also had a resident meeting on October 16th, if my memory serves me correctly.
Act 34 hearing.
Okay.
Act 34 hearing, yeah.
Could you just tell us about that specific to steep slopes and also the next item that you're asking our recommendation on, which is removal of trees?
I think, was there any comment at all?
Act 34.
For hearing about slopes or trees?
Act 34 is concerning department education process.
Can you come up and just state your name just for us?
Yeah, so, sorry, Ken Morris, I'm director of buildings and grounds. So, um, yeah, on October 16th, we had the Act 34 at Ithyn Elementary School. And that's a Department of Education procedural hearing that we have to hold with regards to plan con and budgeting and funding. It does give residents a, an opportunity to come out. It is publicly advertised, gives them an opportunity to come out and they have five minutes to make comment, either to support or oppose the project. That evening, we had no public comment.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions on this part, steep slopes? All right. Let, let's talk about removal of vegetation and I'm assuming it's not just trees that we're talking about, but can you tell us more?
Yeah.
What you're planning to remove?
Yeah, mostly, well, it's mostly trees and we have had a, a study done by Brandywine Urban Forestry and there's a high amount of ash and the woods are in pretty poor shape. So what's the, we had a total of, uh, total amount of trees that we're removing, we're required to put in 635 currently, right now, 425 are being proposed. But we're also proposing a, a forest management program because of the condition of the woods, which are in very poor shape, to try and reestablish the health of, of the woods. So that is being proposed. We'll be going to the, once that's, that's formalized, we'll be taking that to the street, the Shade Tree Commission to, to review that. That said too, where we're, we have to have 256 large canopy trees, we're proposing 286 large canopy trees. We've actually tried to, up in, up in this area in particular, there's some specimens, some, uh, some heritage trees up in this area we're, we're saving there. If you know, if you're familiar with Ithyn and going in, the trees that are right in that on island. So actually that kind of dictated the grading for this whole area in here too. So where we can, uh, where we can save, we did, so.
How far along are you on the tree management plan? Have you mapped out every single tree at this point over?
Oh, yeah, we have, we have, yeah, we have a full, was submitted as with the original plan.
Right, I seem to recall that.
Yeah, it's, it's extensive. I can't remember off top, I had the number of trees, it's in the thousands.
Okay.
Anything that's on the site's been mapped.
So what we're talking about is really removal of 600 trees within the steep slopes? Is that?
No, no, that's what's, that's what's, would be required to replace, the amount of trees being removed. So it's much less than that. I could get an, I could get a number, exact number for that, but we'll have that. But it's, because there's a ratio of any, any heritage trees, it's three replacements, so it's, it's less than that.
Gotcha.
I'm very familiar with, with vegetation around there. I used to play back there with my kids. And as you'd said, it's very, it's not, it's poor, I guess, poor forestry. I mean, there's a lot of vegeta, there's a lot of vines, there's a lot of like poison ivy, like outgrowth.
Yeah. And actually the school gets, gets calls because neighbors will hear a tree fall and then they have to make sure that the walk, the existing walkways there are, are cut, kept clear. Cause there's, there's walkways now to come, existing walkways that come to the back for the neighborhoods down below. So it is really in poor shape and their intent is to, to, you know, instead of planting the full 625, plant 400 and supplement, supplement with the, the succession growth and make sure that, that woods is actually healthy and usable by, you know, the people in the area. Cause people like, you know, you, you, like you said, you go into the woods.
It's not, you can't penetrate through there.
Yeah.
Such dense vines.
Thick it.
It's more of a thicket than the woods, yeah.
So I don't want to lose the forest for the trees, no pun intended, but, um, in the public comment that you've received from anybody, has anybody made comment on the sheer number of removal, remove trees?
No.
Potentially remove trees.
No, not at this time. Yeah, cause like, you know, our plan, our plan is to, like I said, we still have a lot of trees in the forest management plan and, and try to make the woods healthier than they currently are.
Okay. And you have not, of course, been in front of Shade Tree at this juncture?
No, not yet, no, no. Yeah, we, like I said, we have to formalize, we're working with Brandywine to finalize that. They have proposed that in other areas. I don't know if it's been proposed in, in Radnor yet. It has been proposed that adjacent townships have similar, similar requirements and it's seemed to be met with favorably because of the conditions of the woods. You know, you want them to be healthy. There's a lot of ash in there, a lot, like 60% of that woods is ash.
You just mentioned that there were favorable comments about your plan or are you referring to a different township?
I was referring to a different township.
Okay.
That seemed to be, that seemed based off of what Brandywine told us, it was met favorably by that township. I could, I don't recall what that township is, but it's, it's nearby.
Have there been any favorable comments on your potential tree management plan?
We haven't had any comments as of yet.
Okay, gotcha.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioners, what questions do you have on part two of the variance request? Removing vegetation from steep slopes?
I, I think, um, just for that, the one community that I was referring to on Burnmore Avenue, if you could have some sort of mature and or, I don't know, how do you replace a canopy tree in this day and age? But I can't imagine you're installing a hundred foot mature tree there.
Oh, no, no.
But the idea there is to, at least from a concept standpoint, that I think would be the area I would want to focus, I think would be the benefit to focus on, both from aesthetically to protect those residents and even from the folks at Cornerstone, wanting to be looking up the hill and seeing the school building.
Yeah, and as it is, I mean, most, most of the woods disturbance is up by the school, right behind the school, on, on the periphery, it's, there is no planned disturbance on, on the periphery whatsoever.
Any other thoughts or questions, commissioners? All right, let's hear from staff if staff has anything to offer. I'm seeing none.
Um, do we have an actual number for the variance for the number of trees being removed?
We could provide that, yes.
Do, do you have an estimate? I think you told us a total of 400 and some odd trees.
The total we're proposing is 400 and the required is 600. We're going to supplement the difference.
Right, yeah, I understand that.
We're going to supplement the difference with the forest.
So what, what percentage of that 400 is in the steep slopes?
I, I could get that information. Majority of them will be, I believe, but I will, I can get that information for the zoning board.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it, it's important to know, I mean, there's a big difference if you're removing 10 trees or 200, obviously, as far as the variance goes.
So again, Peter, I think most of them are actually being removed from the slopes because very little disturbance is happening around the edges of the property. So if you kind of go to Ithyn, you have all of those open areas, kind of where the kids play, the fields. So there's obviously no disturbance there. And then as you get to the edge of the property, you have kind of all the tree cover. And as part of this redevelopment, we're disturbing, we're disturbing the trees that are inside of the perimeter. So most of these trees are going, we'll get an exact number, but most are going to be within the slopes that we're disturbing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Yeah, the, in the area actually where, the area actually where the most of the trees are, are located over here. Most of the other areas around the school are three to one slopes that were graded out when they constructed the school, there's no trees on those slopes. So it's, that's the primary area.
And the, the other, I guess, suggestion would be, you know, I understand the site's large and so you, you've broken it up, but I think, you know, certainly from a zoning hearing board standpoint, if you can provide one plan that shows.
Of course.
Maybe not the whole site, but at least what you're talking about. So you can say, on this plan, here's the area of steep slopes, here are all the trees, instead of having to flip back and forth, certainly.
We will have better exhibits for sure for the zoning hearing board and we'll also have an aerial photo so that we can orient. And I think we'll also have an overlay for the new building on the old building.
I think zoning hearing board always gets better plans and more preparation.
Plenty of preparation for tonight, but just, you know, no exhibit packages for you guys.
Okay. To the solicitor's point, you know, it's hard for us to write a blank check for you on, on the number of trees removed. We understand the need. Thanks for, is it 400-ish?
I think it's going to be in that range, between four and 500 trees, yeah.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands what they're voting on tonight and if that's the case.
And if you look at, I mean, just using, if you lose, if you use this plan, just in general, and I'm noting here, you can see the outline of the, of the trees, they're kind of noted with, with the bubbles. And as you come in through here, you've got kind of the existing woodland area. And, you know, most of those trees, it's just a dense wooded, overgrown area and there's just going to be almost clear cutting there.
Dave, I do have in the, the landscape plan, uh, there, there is a number now, this is just a general number, not steep slopes and not, it's 349 total trees being removed.
On the entire site?
On the entire site. So we'll have, we would designate what's on the steep slope, what's.
Okay.
And, and our replanting is between four and 500. It's, I think what you said, right? Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah.
I think that's helpful. Staff, any other questions, comments, thoughts? All right. Commissioners, one final go around? All right. So I think I'd like to make a motion.